Discussion of Consent Items.
On your agenda, test, test. On your agenda, you'll see items 6A through 6I. Those are the regular recurring items. I'm going to pass over those unless anyone has any questions. There are three, 6G, there are three, actually four, travel requests. We'll take a look at those before we pass them to regular board. But item 6J, the Kentucky Writing Project MOU. Our district has the opportunity to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Kentucky Writing Project. The KWP will pay the salary for one position and the district will receive free instructional coaching and professional development via the employee. 6K Gateway Oral Health MOA. This is an annual renewal to allow Gateway Health to provide oral health programs to elementary students. 6L Maysville Community and Techno College MOA. This is an MOA for Bath County High School students to participate in the MCTC dual credit program. 6M K-9 Resources. This is an annual renewal for K-9 Resources to provide drug dogs to our district at a cost of $8,412. 6N Mountain Comp MOU. Mountain Comp will provide mental health services to children in the Bath County school systems through school-based mental health services. 6O Summer Feeding Rates. Request managers receive $15 an hour. Head cooks $13.50 an hour and cooks $12.50 an hour. And 6P Surplus Items List. In your board agenda in the computer, there's, in the rationale, is all the items that are listed there. Those are the consent agenda items.
Item four, construction update on the BCHS, Lavec and Bath County Middle School renovation with Pax Walker and Ross Tarrant.
Good evening, just a brief update on the high school. We're in the gym and trying to wrap it up. We got then also much list throughout the building, you know, different places. We're trying to just wrap up some things such as doors, hardware, you know, a little touch up paint here and there. But primary, all the work's in the gym. We're hoping that we may next week have the heating and air conditioning working on the new system. You know, I had a conversation with Ms. Razor about the possibility of graduation. I told her I didn't think it was going to happen. We got the building inspector, I think he's on site tomorrow. And we're just going to run it by him, just see what he, what he says if we do have air circulating next week on the new system. I don't, I don't know. I doubt that he'll allow us, but in other instances, we've had what we call far watch individuals. You know, if we don't have everything, all your life safety issues hooked up, ready to go, all the inspections made. Sometimes they allow us to have individuals, they far watch. I mean, they walk the halls ever, they patrol it every 20 minutes or whatever, the same area. And so I don't know that they would allow something like that or not. But we've got several inspections to be made between now and the end of the project. We're still, you know, June 30th, we still think that's a good date to be pretty much complete, substantially complete. And then, you know, just be trying to wrap up the job. We got a few change orders we're trying to, some were in the middle of, some I guess yet to be priced. And Jonathan will be sharing that with you this time. Any questions?
So in your packet today, the change orders that are ready for us to discuss for the high school are change orders 33 for PR 33. It's a graphic board panel that got reduced in size. We were hoping for a bigger credit than $120, but the suppliers indicating that that PR 33 is both a increase in cost because of the supplier coming across tariffs and fabrication costs going up. Either way, it's still credit, just not as high as we would hope to be savings for PR 33. The second one on your agenda item would be for PR 36, change order proposal, gym louver infill modification. That one, the existing drawings that we were using to size the three louvers at three spots on the side of the gym are actually too large than what's actually there. The two options that we had, the contractor price was option A to forego putting in new fake louvers and to use existing brick on site to, to fill in those holes because they're not needed anymore. That one is a higher dollar amount of like $4,000 and some odd dollars, which is a premium. But it's the fastest way to get this hole, these three holes covered up. The cheaper option is to spend about $1,000 and some dollars for new louvers. But it would take, I think, seven, 10 weeks. So that's the impact of the overall project schedule. While it's a better dollar amount upfront, it will wait a long, longer and technically hold up the project from closing out. So just all to say, it's a unforeseen condition that we thought it was something larger based off the existing drawings. Turns out something smaller needs to come in, which is option B. Or letting you all have louvers and spend the money on infilling with brick for option A.
Mr. Ruiz, there, the board did not receive a package.
Oh, okay.
And so we talked about the ad, going back to ads, but we'll need the numbers on those.
Understood, okay. So for the total of that, so option A, it had a net add of $3,596.50. That comes from two contractors, one that gave a credit for no longer doing some work and another one pricing for brick. And so once those added together, you're 3,500. The option B is a total change of $1,100, but a 10-week project impact time, which I know is not ideal when you're trying to close it out ASAP for the summer. So we would recommend, even though it's a higher dollar amount, option A for the brick, but ultimately up to your discretion.
And on the previous one, the credit, how much was the credit for the graphic?
Sorry, that one is PR 33. That net credit was $120 and that's after they escalated some cost for fabricating it and deducted the cost for the reduction of sizes of the panels that were in the project.
Thank you.
And what was option B?
Going back to PR 36, option B is to order new louvers that are smaller to fit. But that was $1,157.62, but 10-week lead time. So probably won't get them on site until, probably closer to July or August, let's say July.
I know it's additional cost, but I would recommend, let's go ahead and proceed with option A, yes.
And we're using brick from the school, so it would match perfectly and...
Correct, so that, that cost really is the labor for them to infill those holes, offsetting by some labor that another contractor doesn't have to do. But yeah, it's labor at that point.
That's a board decision, but I would agree with Mr. Rhodes, Mr. Ruiz for option A.
So those are the two that are for sure ready for the board's consideration. We were hoping to have what's called PR 37, which would be for the additional tuck pointing at one corner of the gym where there's some mortar joints that have kind of gone away over time and it's allowing water to come in. But that pricing hasn't been verified yet, so we didn't want to put it in front of you yet.
So on the main agenda, that'll need to be tabled or pushed?
Correct, yes.
I have 12.
The other one that is for sure ready to talk through is change order PR 25 for the Lavec project, which is the asphalt improvements. And after discussing with Mr. Detwiler, it seems like they would propose that you all consider accepting areas one and two out of the five areas that were priced in that, in the change order. And I can tell you the breakdown of that now. Okay, so in totality, we priced five areas and out of all the five areas combined, it's about $548,769.11. The area one portion, which is a big majority that starts at the entry of OES, all of OES's parking area and drive to the high school. That is a total of $300,597.05. Area two is where the bus garage and maintenance garage parking area is that has all the buses in them. That zone is priced at $82,355.81. So combined, we're talking about $383,000 for areas one and two out of the total of $548,000. And I don't know if Mr. Detwiler wants to speak to like the, the need for trying to get these two areas done. But we are also still negotiating with the contractor to see how much further they can go down for this. So two pieces for that are, number one, both of the areas include an allowance for what a special inspector would have to verify to be a suitable, as suitable soils so that it doesn't prolong more cracking and failure long-term. And if they agree that yes, something's need to get replaced per the drawings, that's already factored in the cost. Any of those areas that they deem is not needed for full depth removal and replacement, we would be able to credit back against that allowance for the areas. So out of the total $383,000, the allowance is for full depth replacement for failure would be $56,036.50 for area one. And for area two, that allowance is $15,378. So the inspector say, yep, all of these areas for sure need to be replaced, you're already covered. If they're saying half of them need to be covered, they will price against that and credit back the work that's not necessary for replacement. And I guess ballpark would be on total, that would be about $70,000 of an allowance that could be credited back if the inspector says there's no need to replace those areas. Yes, we're unit prices, yeah.
Yes, we had unit prices when the job was bid, what, two years ago, whatever. So it's, so we had, we had good information when they priced it. And so the credits would be the same, same unit price. So it's an ad, it's the same price if you deduct. So it's all about unit prices that we have.
I think Mr. Detwiler is going to speak to the areas in particular.
Well, I think everybody's drove in past OES and saw the potholes and how bad that is. My biggest thing is to, to make it smoother so our entrance looks a whole lot better and we just have a nicer place. Then the, the bus garage, it, I think it was 22 years ago when it got paved. It got one base coat down and then they cut the funding and it never got a second coat like it was supposed to have. So if we don't do something with it now, it will be, I mean, in five years, it's, it's going to have to all be taken up and redone. But the numbers that he's thrown out, we're talking about using contingency money, whatever's left over from the project here at the high school to do that. And then we're, if with this bid, we're, we're going to be $25,000 to $30,000 out of our budget that I've, I've worked with Ms. Brittany on to, for next year's budget, that, that we'll be able to make that work. So it's not all just going to come out of general funds, it will be come out of the project.
Really briefly to add to that, in terms of remaining contingency on the Lavec project, if nothing else gets added, which this is the only change order for the Lavec, the contingency sits at $200,747.34 for you all to freely use on this change order or any portion of it. Any funds beyond that $200,000 would have to come from the high school project, which would only mean that with coordination of the contractor accepting payment after they do the work, that they do the work in, say, June, they pay for, we pay for most of it using the, the $200,000 remaining in Lavec's project. We would then be required to close out the high school project with BG4 and BG5 documentation, which then frees up that high school money of $194,000 to be available to move into Lavec to help pay for the rest. The same would be true for any funds that Ms. Combs or Mr. Detwiler are able to gather to help supplement the balance. We would have to find a way to revise the BG forms for the Lavec project to include those additional pots of money and the high school available contingency so that there's a bigger pot of money to pay for this entire thing being for areas one and two. So it's just some paperwork to figure out. But if the board agrees, then we'll work with the contractor to figure out how to sequence those payments for areas one and two, should you agree for one and two. And after this, I can show you the diagram in case you want to have a bigger picture of where this is going, if you, if you want to talk through that. That's everything for high school and Lavec. I do want to briefly give you an update on middle school. Middle school, we've met. We are having another programming meeting tomorrow. And I can follow up with an email showing the progress of here we are for the schedule, knowing that we're trying to do special call board meetings for schematic design in June and design development in August so that we can get this processed and bid before the end of the year. Those are the highlights of the middle school.
Thank you. Discussion of mock trial stipend.
There are going to be two items on the agenda. One is simply asking that we put into our salary schedule under extra service for mock trial a $2,000 coaching stipend. The second is we started a mock trial at high school this year and our coach, they went to the state, did excellent. And so the second one is asking if we prove that, the first, that we do a retroactive $2,000 stipend for the coach that bid this year. He did that without any salary or pay.
Discussion of tentative budget.
Hello. The tentative budget is based on next year, so we're talking about next year's budget. And then when we get to September of next year, we'll go into the working budget, which is when everything is final and set. So this is our best estimates as of this time for next year. And we have seek base at $4,586. That is an increase from last year. That, that comes from KDE, that's our biggest pot of funding. And that's per pupil. I have prepared it based on the salary schedules that you all approved last month and all the changes that were in it. It includes the May 1st allocated positions. And I do always put a couple extra additional aid positions if the need were to arise, especially for special ed, sometimes that happens. I increased funding in a few areas such as professional development and textbooks just because we are having to implement some programs for reading and math that we didn't used to have. So I did increase those. I budgeted for two bus, school buses. Contingency is in the amount of $850,000, which is 3.39%. The minimum required by statute is 2%. One other area that I did have to increase quite a bit was property insurance. As you all know, with rising prices, insurance went way up. So I did increase that again in case it increases again this year. And then, of course, we also continue funding for four SROs. Any questions about the budget?
Thank you. Discussion of 24, 25 amended school calendar.
Do you want to say anything there? This is just simply, we waited for the final amendment to make sure that we didn't miss any other days. This is just to codify that July 28th will be the last, July, let's try that again. May 28th will be the last day for students and June 4th will be the last day for staff. So we'll just need the board to approve that calendar amendment.
Discussion of ProSource's contract.
Dr. Griffith, it was time for our copier lease to be up every four years. And so he, he did an extensive bid process where they completed a rubric and did a lot of different things, cost on color, very extensive. And so he came back and he asked that we approved ProSource as our copier and printer, for our copier and printer bid. Stammering there, apologize.
Return.
At 6:30 in the lobby, there's going to be a reception for all our retirees. So we'll go out there and enjoy our time with them. And then we'll come back in in the working session and have a little ceremony as well for them. So at this time, if you want to make your way to the lobby, we appreciate you. we appreciate you.
Again, I truly appreciate each and every one of you. The board wants to thank you for your service as well. Thank you all.
I said a lot of knowledge going out the door. That's not a good thing. Item five, superintendent and board communications, A personnel actions and B fundraisers.
Just quickly follow up on what I just said. As we wrap up another remarkable school year in Bath County schools, I want to take a moment to express my deepest appreciation for the outstanding efforts and achievements across our district. First and foremost, we recognize and honor our retirees. Your years of dedication, service, and care have left a profound and lasting legacy in the lives of countless students. You've helped shape the heart of our schools, and we thank you for your commitment to education and our community. I also want to commend our students and staff for their hard work and perseverance in preparing for and performing on the Kentucky Summit of Assessment. The results are a reflection of your focus, resilience, and commitment to academic excellence. Your efforts do not go unnoticed and are deeply appreciated. Finally, to every member of our staff, thank you for making this school year a success. Whether in the classroom, on our campuses, or behind the scenes, your dedication and passion have created a supportive and inspiring environment for our students to learn and grow. I am incredibly proud to serve alongside such a talented and committed team. As we wind down the school year and head towards summer break, I just want to wish everyone the very best and hope each of you enjoys the break and makes some great memories. Thank you.
Item six, discussion and possible action on approving the following items. A, April 28th, 25 minutes. B, April financial statement. C, claims. D, superintendent expenditures. E, grants. F, use of facility. G, travel. H, review of all monthly financial reports of all funds. I, pay bills through May 31st, 2025, 7pm. Call to order, Bath County Board of Education, regular meeting, May 19th, 2025, 7pm. Discussion and possible action on tonight's agenda? I have a motion by Carla, second by Ashley, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Item four is our Bath County retiree celebration.
Turn this way, psychs here, buddy. Take my glasses off, psychs here, buddy. When people come to me and they turn in their resignation at central office, one of the things that people, it struck them kind of odd is they would say like, "He was smiling when I gave him my resignation. I don't think he wanted me to be here." And I'd have to explain to them, "No, it's just the opposite. When you've put your time in and you've worked so hard for kids and you've worked so hard for the district." For me, it's a beautiful day. It's a cause for celebration. So when I see people have made it to this point in their lives, I smile because I'm so happy for you. And so it's a great opportunity. And I know looking out there and seeing Davey retired but can't get rid of him, he just keeps coming back. But now he's got somebody at home that probably wants him to still keep coming back. But it's an opportunity where you have given and devoted 20-plus years to kids, to a district, to a community. I'm just so honored to have this opportunity to recognize you all this evening, and I wish you all the very best in your future endeavors. And we know you won't be a stranger. So at this time, my assistant and I, Vanna White, will call your name, we'll have a certificate, have a small gift of appreciation. It's not enough for all you've done, but we just want to recognize you. And Ms. Donahue will take your picture as well. Half blind. Matt Vincent.
The better half, Leigh Ann Ramey.
Melinda Crockett. Mindy Crockett.
And we have one more. Mr. Steve Evans.
Again, I truly appreciate each and every one of you. The board wants to thank you for your service as well. Thank you all.
I said a lot of knowledge going out the door. That's not a good thing. Item five, superintendent and board communications, A personnel actions and B fundraisers.
Just quickly follow up on what I just said. As we wrap up another remarkable school year in Bath County schools, I want to take a moment to express my deepest appreciation for the outstanding efforts and achievements across our district. First and foremost, we recognize and honor our retirees. Your years of dedication, service, and care have left a profound and lasting legacy in the lives of countless students. You've helped shape the heart of our schools, and we thank you for your commitment to education and our community. I also want to commend our students and staff for their hard work and perseverance in preparing for and performing on the Kentucky Summit of Assessment. The results are a reflection of your focus, resilience, and commitment to academic excellence. Your efforts do not go unnoticed and are deeply appreciated. Finally, to every member of our staff, thank you for making this school year a success. Whether in the classroom, on our campuses, or behind the scenes, your dedication and passion have created a supportive and inspiring environment for our students to learn and grow. I am incredibly proud to serve alongside such a talented and committed team. As we wind down the school year and head towards summer break, I just want to wish everyone the very best and hope each of you enjoys the break and makes some great memories. Thank you.
Item six, discussion and possible action on approving the following items. A, April 28th, 25 minutes. B, April financial statement. C, claims. D, superintendent expenditures. E, grants. F, use of facility. G, travel. H, review of all monthly financial reports of all funds. I, pay bills through May 31st, 2025, 7pm. I, pay bills through May 31st, 2025. J, Kentucky writing memorandum of understanding. K, Gateway Oral Health memorandum of agreement. L, Maysville Community and Technical College memorandum of agreement. M, Canine Resource Agreement. N, Mountain Comprehensive Care MOU. O, summer feeding rates. P, surplus items list. I have a motion by Carla, a second by Kim, any discussion? I, I would like to ask, um, a question. I had it up here. Um, this, um, trip to Louisville, uh, Victory Over Violence, what is that?
Uh, the Victory Over Violence is for the Friskies, it's a conference. Ms. Donahue oversees the-
They have, yes, they have to attend two national conferences, about one out of the two. One is in the Center on Resurfaces, the other one is Fall Institute. Sometimes they go to both, but they are required to go to one of these.
Okay.
Thank you.
And a trail grant to Washington DC?
Ms. Manier.
Hi, I'm Ashley Manier. Um, do you just want an overview of what the trip is, or do you have questions?
Yeah, I just, just, just a brief little overview.
Sure, um, so I have been accepted as part of a grant from the Wilderness Education Project. It'll last five years. Part of that was we could apply to take students this summer to Washington DC at no cost to them. Um, it's preferential to students who are gifted and talented in social studies, or students who couldn't afford to go on their own. Um, so far, I've been just taking applications until we knew for sure it was, uh, approved, and I've probably got about twenty, but they're not due until later this week. And then from those applicants, I can choose twelve, who get to go for free. Um, basically hit all the highlights of Washington. It's me and three grant leaders and four other teachers. We each get to take students with us. They'll also get a $400 stipend card, basically to pay for some of the incidentals along the way. The only thing they really have to pay for is a meal on the way up and a meal on the way down, just where we're on a bus, and everything else is covered, so.
Sounds good.
No problem.
Okay, thank you. So, again, I have motion by Carla, second by Kim. All in favor signify by saying yes, yes, opposed, motion carries. I don't have any public comments. Item eight, discussion and possible action for Bath County Middle School renovation, BG 25-084, to establish a special call board meeting date for schematic design approval in June and design development approval in August.
I'll make that motion to pass Bath County Middle School renovation, BG number 25-084, to establish a special call board meeting date for schematic design approval in June and design development approval in August.
I have a motion by Carla, second by Kim, any discussion? No. Jonathan, do you know when you might want that date?
For the June one, we're thinking the week before the regular meetings, so I think that's the 16th. The one in August, same idea, a week before your regular one. I don't remember that exact date, but ultimately, one week before your regular meeting in June and August would be the goal.
What time would you like?
Honestly, it's just the day is all, all that matters to us. If it needs to be a certain time, we'll leave it to whatever you prefer. But, uh, I can make any time happen. I just want to make sure it's approved at a, at a faster pace with these special call board meetings.
How long is the meeting?
It would be just to, uh, talk through any of the drawings and/or cost opinion items, so maybe thirty minutes at most. I think for the August one, a little longer, because it'll be more information. Truly, the one in, in June will be a diagram and a cost opinion, so I think thirty minutes max would be the, all we would need.
So that'll be the ninth through to thirteenth?
The, I believe it's the week of the 16th.
The meeting's the 16th? That's the board meeting, isn't it?
The board meeting's 23rd.
23rd, okay. Monday, the 16th of June?
To have a special board meeting on that day, is there a time period? Because if you don't, it's just hard to get everyone's time. Ashley, you're working on that day? After the 16th, you want it to? Is that okay?
Yep.
It's two o'clock?
Two P? 2:00 PM?
2:00 PM? Uh, uh, let me make sure, short answer's yes. I'll make it, yes.
And it, and that one should be for about thirty minutes or an hour?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The August one, I would say closer to thirty for sure, minimum, uh, because I'm sure they'll, we'll have full drawings or a lot more developed drawings to go through, and I, you might have questions about what's in them, uh, but that would be in August. Same idea, just a week before the regular call board meeting.
So that would be the 18th?
I think that sounds right.
Ashley, you need to be after once, that's another Monday. Well, I don't care, I can schedule mine for tomorrow. So if you want morning, that's perfect, Tuesday morning, okay, we can on the 18th of June. I'm sorry, August.
At 10 AM? Is that?
Yeah.
10 AM on the 18th of August, that works for me, yes.
No, I don't think so. We're just looking at some drawings. That's the first day back for teachers?
In terms of what the design team needs, no. Um, we would be able to review it with the principal, uh, like a week before then, so we'll be able to get their input. It's really just the final approval of whatever the, the board needs to approve for us to proceed to the next step of the design process. So really just, uh, I guess the majority of the board would all be needed.
You want to go to Tuesday?
Tuesday, yeah, that works. I just knew that, I just knew that we couldn't hold it until the regular call board meeting on the 25th, but if it's Tuesday to the 19th, the Tuesday to the 19th works. 10 AM, yes.
Is everybody good? So all in favor signify by saying yes, yes, opposed, motion carries.
We'll do the same idea as we get closer to construction documents, just so we can keep on track with the fast schedule, but didn't want to go too far ahead, but I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Item nine, discussion and possible action to approve a board-appointed designated for the Bath County Middle School renovation, BG 25-084, to approve survey proposals prior to board approval.
A little, little context on that, we have survey proposals gone out as of today. They're due back, uh, with an estimate for their services around the 27th. So, to help keep with the four-to-eight week lead time that they would take to actually produce the survey, we're hoping to have maybe Mr. Detweiler or someone that the board feels comfortable with, comfortable with, with approving a potential, um, like forty thousand dollar quote. Not thinking it is going to be forty thousand, but that's at least what we budgeted for the project. Um, but if there is a quote that is in with that, with, below that range, having someone approve that before I actually come to the board on the 16th and say, "Here's the official approval," um, because we would gain some more weeks if we had a conditional approval upfront.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Mr. Phil Detweiler as the designated to approve, um, survey proposals.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a motion by Barbara, second by Carla, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes, yes, opposed, motion carries. Discussion and possible action to approve Bath High School HVAC renovation, BG 22-376, change order proposal, PR 33, graphic panel reductions credit of a hundred and twenty dollars.
I'll make that motion to approve Bath County High School HVAC renovation, BG number 22-376, change order proposal, PR 33, graphic panel reductions credit of a hundred and twenty dollars.
So I have a motion by Carla, second by Ashley, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes, yes, opposed, motion carries. Item 11, discussion and possible action to approve Bath County High School HVAC renovation, BG 22-376, change order, PR 36, gym louver infill modification. And I think we have two options on that.
Option A is what?
Option A at thirty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, because it is ten weeks of program to get it done. We're just waiting on option B. So it's a twenty-three hundred dollar difference.
You want to make that motion?
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve the Bath County High School HVAC renovation, BG 22-376, change order, PR 36, gym louver infill modification, add for option A.
I have a motion by Carla, second by Ashley, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes, yes, opposed, motion carries. And item 12, we are to table that at this time? Due to not having bids?
Yes, ma'am.
Item 13, discussion and possible action to approve the Bath Layvec Phase II, BG 22-520, change order proposal for PR 25, owner asphalt improvement areas one through five.
So for this one, we'd recommend that, uh, the board consider approval with a limit not to exceed, and we set the amount at, um, at four hundred thousand, and then that way, we can negotiate down and figure out how much we can chip away for areas one and two, to get it within the remaining contingency available amount.
Okay, let me, can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Because for area one, you gave us the number of three hundred, three hundred thousand, five hundred ninety-seven.
Yes, ma'am.
And then eighty, for area two, it was eighty-two thousand, three fifty-five. Are we gonna just do areas one and two, or are we gonna use up to the four hundred thousand and try to do a little bit of maybe three or number four? Why are we doing the four hundred thousand?
The four hundred thousand sets a limit for the work that you see outlined and the CM and design team services for that work. Um, every change order that is approved by the board at a add to the project, uh, has associated CM and design fees, so that's one piece there. Uh, you're right, the three hundred and eighty-three thousand is the construction, let's call it soft costs, for them to do all the work. And then the four hundred thousand limit is for the additional design team fees and CM fees to cover that. Um, but that's not the, the ballpark of, of fifty thousand dollars. It's to help cover anything that is additional to the actual construction cost, which would be the design and CM fees.
And they also said, uh, inspectors, uh, might say there were certain areas within those two areas that did not need resurfacing, and we would-
Credit back.
That was to be determined, right?
Yes, ma'am. So in that three hundred and eighty-three thousand, area one and two estimate, or quote, um, there are allowances that will be confirmed by the special inspector. In there, if there's more than what we show on the drawings, that will increase the cost, but we put enough in the drawings for there to be kind of a safe zone of hopefully nothing extra. And in fact, if they deem that a lot of it doesn't need to happen, we'll credit back against those allowances that are outlined inside of that three hundred and eighty-three thousand. So, four hundred is a way for us to work with the contractor to see how much further we can go, also to cover any incidentals with the special inspector. Uh, but we have the benefit of crediting back any work that special inspector deems to not be necessary for full depth replacement.
So what was our contingency that we had left over to work with? How mu, what was that dollar amount? Do you recall?
The ready-to-go pot of money for Layvec is two hundred thousand, I think seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. The remaining balance would have to come out of the high school, which is currently sitting at a hundred and ninety-four thousand, and I can get you the exact numbers for that, but a hundred and ninety-four thousand roughly for the high school. Um, with the caveat of that together being three hundred and ninety-five thousand. Clearly, the gap would have to be something that Mr. Detweiler works with Ms. Combs to kind of figure out how much money, um, they've saved aside to help cover that four hundred thousand dollar gap that the contingency cannot cover. But, your question, yeah, we have about three hundred and ninety-five thousand available between high school and Layvec contingency available to help pay for this.
I just wanted to make sure that, I just wanted to know how much, if we didn't have enough in contingency, what it was gonna cost the school, that's all. But if we have it already left over, then, you know, because it, it needs it, it's a mess out there, so.
Yes, and you have my word in that, when it comes to the limit not to exceed, we will not come to you and say, "Oh, we need more than what you have." Our job is to make sure that we negotiate with the contractor to be able to cover everything you have upfront with the contingency and let you know about any overage that might have to come out of some other pot of money that maybe Mr. Detweiler has set aside, if we need to go that far.
Okay, thank you.
Don't we need to bid the, this with the asphalt?
No, ma'am. So because the, uh, Layvec project already had asphalt as part of the project, it's included as a change order to amend the amount of asphalt that's already been done to include this other area as well.
I'll make the motion to approve the Bath County Layvec Phase II, BG number 22-520, change order proposal for PR 25, owner asphalt improvement areas one through five, not to exceed four hundred thousand.
I second. So I have a motion by Carla, second by Barbara, any discussion? Yes.
The motion has to be for one through five, because if, they're, they're gonna do areas one and two for sure, but if there's money left over to go to areas three, four, or five, they can't exceed four hundred thousand. So if they can shave some money, like we're, like she was saying, if they find areas that will not be, they don't have to be resurfaced in those areas, then they could take that portion of that asphalt and use it in a different area to fix.
All in favor signify by saying yes, yes, opposed, motion carries.
Ms. Razor, if I, my apologies for interrupting, but, uh, item 12, since it's an action item, to table it, I think we have to have a, a motion and a vote.
Okay, okay. So I, I'm making motion, uh, to approve Bath County High School HVAC renovation, BG 22-376, change order proposal, PR 37, gym exterior wall tuck pony, tuck pointing addition to be tabled. Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
So I have a motion by Barbara, second by Kim. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes. 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 Motion carries. Thank you. Item 14, discussion and possible action to approve mock trial coaching stipend for $2,000 to the 25-26 extra service salary schedule.
I'll make a motion to approve the mock trial coaching stipend for 2,000 to the 2025-2026 extra service salary schedule.
I have a motion by Carla, second by Ashley. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes. 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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item 15, discussion and possible action to retroactively approve $2,000 for the high school mock trial team coach for the 24-25 school year.
I'll make that motion to approve, uh, retroactively approve $2,000 for the high school mock trial team coach for the 2024-2025 school year.
I have a motion by Carla, second by Kim. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 16, discussion and possible action to approve the fiscal year '25 tentative budget.
I'll make that motion to approve the fiscal year '25 tentative budget.
I have a motion by Carla, second by Kim. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 17, discussion and possible action to approve the final school calendar amendments.
I'll make that motion to approve the final school calendar amendments.
I have a motion by Carla, second by Kim. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes. 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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item 18, discussion and possible action to approve pro-sources four-year bid for the copier and printer needs across the district.
I'll make that motion to approve force, pro-sources four-year bid for the copier and printer needs across the district.
I have a motion by Carla, a second by Ashley. Any discussion?
I have a question. Do we take bids on this and they were just cheaper?
Yes, uh, there was, bids were put out across the state, and, uh, he had a very detailed rubric so that everything was exactly apples to apples, and they came in the best.
They did. And have we ever done business with them to know their quality?
I'm seeing a yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just checking. Because sometimes everything looks good on paper, and then the cheapest isn't always the best deal, you know, if it breaks down a lot or something.
Absolutely.
All in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 19, other business?
Ms. Chairwoman, if you'll allow me, uh, we, we put the agenda out on Friday. This morning, there was an item that came up that I, I would ask you to consider for other business because, uh, the time will really have passed by the next board meeting, and Mr. Detwiler can explain it a lot better than I can, if you'd allow him to-
Yes.
-share that information.
So we've got, uh, quite a bit of land out at crossroads that, um, instead of spending our money bush hogging it or, or cutting it, however we need to do. In the past, when they built crossroads, they took, for lack of better terms, they took bids from people to come cut the hay. If the people cut the hay, they get to keep it as long as they, it, it looks decent, it looks good at the end of the year, so it looks good all winter. So what we, uh, have done in the past was we take bids front, we put it, add in the newspaper for two weeks, and we take bids, and then we'll open those bids, just like if, if we're doing a construction deal. We'll open all those bids, put those names in a hat, draw them out one at a time, and then we will, whoever gets drawn first gets this year, the next one, the next year. And then if we get two bids, we'll take bids again in two years. If we get 20 bids, we'll take bids again in 20 years. So we, I'd just like permission to, uh, be able to put it in the newspaper to take those bids so we can get that process going of, uh, and making crossroads look good this summer.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to put a bid out for crossroads mowing services? For, of the hayfield.
I have a motion by Carla, a second by Ashley. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion by Barbara, second by Carla. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. Opposed?